We're going to call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Again, I apologize. Karen, could you please call the roll?
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Gerard. He is absent. Commissioner Batty.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Keen.
Here.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
For those of you that are able to stand, could we please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Folks, I'm looking for a motion, please, to approve the agenda or to make modifications.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Brink. Second by Mr. Miller. Karen, could you do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen.
Aye.
And Commissioner Brink.
Aye.
And now I would seek a motion, please, to approve or amend the planning commission meeting minutes from January 13th, 2021. Anybody interested in either making a motion or amending the minutes? Commissioner Miller, move.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the January 13th meeting.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Keen, thank you very much. Karen, I'm sorry, one more roll call, please.
Commissioner Young.
Aye.
Commissioner Batty.
Aye.
Commissioner Miller.
Aye.
Commissioner Keen.
Aye.
Commissioner Brink.
Aye.
That motion also carries. Donovan, would you like to introduce us to item number six on the agenda? 2255-2, Everton Avenue, the Timber Ridge Apartments.
Certainly. Chair and members of the Planning Commission like to present the preliminary PUD application from Mark Lambert, who's proposing Timber Ridge two, two buildings at 2255-2 Everton Avenue. This was tabled from the January 13th Plan Commission meeting where the commissioners sought more information and had some concerns they'd like addressed in an amended plan. And Mr. Lambert has amended the plan. And Karen, could you bring him into the meeting also, please? And what he's proposed is I'll show a plan that he sent over that's kind of a combined. So it's the easiest to, easiest to show most of the information on. And I'll share my screen here. So what we have is still is two buildings. Access is still from Everton Avenue. The, as I mentioned, there's two 53 unit buildings in a similar configuration as you saw previously. The, as a side note, the zoning map amendment that was associated with this project to change the zoning map from highway commercial to multiple family was approved by council on this past Monday night on the eighth. And so what we have here is, beginning with, is the, we can see that the, the storage maintenance building has been moved significantly further east away from the adjacent residential. And it, you know, this approximately, I believe it was three, it's about 260 feet from that western property line. Previously it was at 35. It also now has a 10-foot sidewall, same square footage. And so that relocation and the shortening of the building brings it now into compliance with the standards for accessory structures for the multiple family district. Looking over at the parking area, because of the reduction in number of units, the reduction of the PUD flexibility sought for the number of enclosed spaces now is actually, you know, seeking 34 less garage spaces than the code requires. So that's a total of 172 garage spaces. And with 156 comes to a ratio of 2.1 spaces per unit. So that meets the supply standard. Also, what we will see here is that, can you still see my screen?
Yes.
Yeah. Is that with this, with this condensing of the site, there is now, you know, these, these two circles represent the 200-foot radius from the building entrances. And so now for both the north and south building, the, all the required parking is within 200 feet of an entrance. And so that, that PUD flexibility is no longer sought. The, the, this, this layout was, did come with a, a figure showing that the fire truck can get the required access for the largest, you know, emergency fire vehicle. The, what's also is part of, you know, addressing Plan Commission concerns, the, there are now a request to have 56% of the units being one bedroom or studios. And this is down from 62%. I did look back at some of the other approved buildings. And in comparison, Timber Ridge one had 43, 44%, 43.8, one bedroom or studio. Arbor Ridge had 45% one bedroom. The Lighthouse Lofts had little over 40%. And then the Gateway Green apartment buildings both had 43%. And so this is, you know, smaller than was previously proposed, but it is more than we've seen in Forest Lake. And the, you know, Mr. Lambert states it is, you know, a result of market studies and what he thinks will, will work best as far as those number of units. So there wasn't a reduction, I mean, it was not a increase in three-bedroom units. That was part of the comments from that January 13th meeting. But that percentage has, has declined of the one bedroom. The trash enclosure now is below 400 square feet. So there's no flexibility sought there to get below that, that 400 square foot threshold. The submitted lighting plan does comply with the, the lighting regulations regarding, you know, light spillover and the LED luminaires, as well as, you know, having no pole heights exceed 25 feet. The landscaping plan is, is definitely beefed up from the last time you saw it. Let me actually, let me jump over to the, the, the combined one. Because this shows it very clearly. So that, you know, we have a much more distinct screening along the, this rear, rear upper end area, you know, with, with the building. And these are Black Hill Spruce, also on the southern side, as well as along the Everton frontage. However, I believe there's still lacking that, that similar screening on the north side to comply with the perimeter tree landscaping requirements. And of course, there is really robust amount of, you know, plantings around, there's foundation plantings for those buildings, as well as some to around the dumpster enclosure. The, so, you know, in summary, what, what is being sought for the PUD flexibilities, you know, is, you know, the 56% rather than 20% of the one-bedroom or studio units. The unit size is, is in 10, 10 studio apartments, less than, than the 600 feet. And so there's a, you know, units are between 570 and 561 square feet in size. There is 72 garage spaces or enclosed spaces as opposed to 120. And the building height is about 50 feet. And that's a little bit above that 45-foot maximum. And this, this is consistent with, you know, other, other buildings we've seen that have these four stories in Forest Lake. The engineer's review has many things crossed off, this being a private project. Ryan didn't have a lot to say. He does have some comments that, you know, some details that would need to be fleshed out, you know, with, with final plans. What, you know, right now, the reconstruction for Everton Avenue is still being, you know, the county's still designing that. What is proposed is trees within their drainage and utility easement on this edge. And that's, there's a county easement and that's a kind of decision on whether that's acceptable. You know, you know, every, in any city approval is contingent upon obtaining the required county permits. In, in one of the figures, Mr. Lambert showed some proof of parking, where if some more spaces were lost along Everton Avenue, that there could be spaces added to the rear here. And I'll note that this, this, some, some portion of this parking area will require a wetland replacement application and permitting for that. That's basically, you know, that was how the, the parking within the required radius was achieved, was through some, some impacts, which, you know, condensed the whole, the whole, all site improvements. I think it make it much more usable for those rear spots. And with, so with that, the, the staff recommendation, you know, is for approval of this, this site plan with conditions related to, you know, meeting the city engineers and fire chiefs' concerns. The final plans conforming to final PUD plans, as well as getting a required permits for, for the wetland replacement from the watershed district, from Washington County, and, you know, submitting the, the required financials. And of course, you know, getting a building permit. This is still the preliminary review. It goes, it's a recommendation from the Plan Commission. At this point, I'd like to take any questions from Plan Commission.
Do any commissioners have questions of Donovan? Mr. Brink?
I was just curious with the other examples you gave, Arbor Ridge, Lighthouse Lofts, with the 40, 44% and so on. Do you remember or recall what was given, the reason for the exception over the 20% in those cases? Was it demographic, just demographic related or?
Yeah, it's.
Figure out the disparity between 20 to 40 and then 40 to 62 and.
Yeah, the, the 20%, it's been in the code since at least 2010 with that last code revision. And the reason it was given was demographic. I mean, we can see it nationwide, how households are getting smaller. You know, people are downsizing. There is, you know, has been more of a tendency to accept renting as a lifestyle, not as simply an economic choice. So more people are, you know, who otherwise might have purchased are renting. And, you know, Mr. Lambert does mention a market study that was completed as part of this. So it's, it does, it does track with what we've seen, you know, even some of this information is included in the latest comprehensive plan related to, you know, just having smaller households and then, you know, just corresponding to smaller living space.
Other commissioners? I'm sorry, Mr. Brink, I interrupted.
No, that's okay. I was just going to say, the, the reason I was asking, because I can understand the, the demographics now. But if this is kind of consistent with how things are going, what's going to happen if we reverse direction and go the other way? Are we going to have a surplus of one bedrooms? And, you know, what's that going to do? But, you know, who's to say what the future is going to bring, but. But thank you.
Commissioner Batty?
Donovan, do we have any idea where the applicant's at here with the watershed district approval process? Have you been given any indication on where they're at on this?
Yeah, they submitted, I believe it's going to be reviewed at this February board meeting, which is, I think, the third week of February. Mr. Lambert will be able to give you the details on that.
Okay, well, we'll talk with him when he comes on.
Other commissioners? Donovan, could you please give me the number of studios, the number of one bedroom, the number of two bedroom, and the number of three bedroom in the current application?
Okay, let's, let me share with you the application and believe it's. Mark, do you recall what page it's on?
Mr. Lambert, you are on mute. Need to, and there you go.
Most people prefer that. Donovan, I'm sorry, we, we removed seven one bedrooms from each unit. And so I'm diligently trying to pull that up. That may have been in the initial architect drawing. And so I need to find my Word document that we had a nice summary in.
Is it, is it in the revision page?
Oh, shoot, let me see here. I'm sorry. If you guys will give me a minute, I'll find that for you if you have another question at any time.
Are there other questions for Donovan? Looking at some of the demographic information I've been able to find, I, I agree Donovan with your assessment of national demographics. But looking at our Forest Lake information, we're not seeing that change to a large number of single persons, which would be a studio or one-bedroom unit. In Forest Lake, we, we do have a significant number of families. Did you have those numbers, please?
I did. Commissioner, studios are 20 units. And those are not bedroom units, those are studio units. One bedrooms have fallen from 54 units to 40. Two-bedroom units remain the same at 38. And three-bedroom units remain the same at eight.
Thank you.
So we removed 14 one bedrooms to reduce the overall size and also increase the percentages of two-bedroom and three-bedroom accordingly.
But the, the number of studios remain the same?
The number of studios remain the same, 20, yes.
If there are no other questions for Donovan, do the commissioners have any questions for Mr. Lambert? Commissioner Batty? Mr. Batty, are you on mute?
Can you give us an idea of kind of where things are at with the watershed here? I mean, I'm assuming if an applicant, you know, if, if you're on a schedule that an application has been submitted, that means that you've had some kind of staff review. Have you gotten any indication at all of how the, how the watershed's going to look at this wetland filling? And your proposed wetland filling on the project?
You know, we've had some preliminary discussions. We actually have identified the replacement wetlands and have a purchase agreement for the replacement wetlands. As you know, just filling for no reason is difficult. In this case, there's a two-acre separation or separation between us and a two-acre with kind of a natural pathway between the two. So between us having the replacement wetlands and between us having done our homework, we expect that the application will be approved.
Do other commissioners have questions of Mr. Lambert? Mr. Lambert, what, what are your price points that you expect for the studio and one bedroom especially? But I'm assuming you've got some ideas of your price points on the other units?
They'll be similar to our Timber Ridge existing product. We're expecting our three bedrooms to be in the 1,600 or so range. Two bedrooms in the 1,200 to 1,400 range. One bedrooms, a little over 1,000, and studios below 1,000.
And just so that the other commissioners know kind of where I'm coming from on that, I looked up the median income for Washington County for an individual. And it is $44,000 a year. So that to be considered affordable, a rent of 880 would be considered affordable at that, by that median income person. And I guess from my perspective, if the city is, is going to move forward with allowing a very large percentage, then as with all PUDs, there's some given, some give a little, get a little. I would expect a significant number of units to, to fall into an affordable category. But I don't know where the other, other commissioners are on that. Um, other questions for the commissioners or, pardon me, from the commissioners to Mr. Lambert? Sorry, I'm really rusty. Okay. Yes, Mr. Lambert?
Well, I, I'd just like to maybe take a minute and just address the Planning Commission. Obviously, our last meeting in January wasn't one of my best meetings. Frankly, I, I understand that there was some frustrations. I understand that there is always an ongoing concern with trying to balance the site geometrics, if you will. I, I guess I would still maybe leave a couple of thoughts for you. One is, I heard you. The site was more dense than you'd like. We addressed that by reducing our unit count from 120 units to 106 units. That had the effect of reducing our, our impervious surface and our parking by 30 spaces. That pulled our parking back out within the 200-foot confines, subject to obviously the wetland approval, which we expect. We went through and reduced our asks. We reduced our asks on the storage shed or the maintenance building. That was a 16-foot sidewall. We eliminated that to comply, 10 feet. We reduced our asks on the overstory trees. We now have all overstory trees are in compliance. We reduced our ask on signage. We're now in compliance on signage. We were asked to make our materials match the shed and the buildings and have a color palette. We've done that. So as we start to walk through, I think the ask tonight is significantly less than the ask was last night because frankly, we heard you and we understand the request. We understand the issue of affordability. And Commissioner Young, I know that you may bristle at this, but the, the answer for affordability isn't always to build three-bedroom units that are, are 200 or $2,000 a month or $1,800 a month. Sometimes there's affordability or approachability in the smaller unit size. Everybody, sorry, there, there seems to be a concern that gee, we're 56% of one-bedroom units. Well, that's not accurate. We are actually 50 or 36% one-bedroom units. We are 20% studios. And I would suggest to you that those are different products. And I would also suggest to you that those studios are not something that you've had in your marketplace. And if we're looking to address approachability, affordability, allowing us to have units that, that we can sell for $1,000 a month, quite frankly, could be just as valuable as having three bedrooms that, that we would have to charge more for. I, I understand the desire that, that, you know, everything should be more affordable and that there's an obligation for affordability. On the other hand, I would suggest to you that we've gone a long way to approach that. So as the Planning Commission reviews this tonight, I would ask for your support because we did hear you. We did make changes. I would also ask you to consider how difficult of a site this is. We obviously have a couple of wetland loaves. I think frankly, I'm extremely plowed of our architects. I'm extremely plowed of our civil guys because frankly, I think we've made a doggone good building. And I think it ties into what we did with Timber Ridge. And I think it's something that the Planning Commission, the City Council, City of Forest Lake, we very, very proud of for a long time to come because we've really done this one right. So as you look to this, you know, we have worked with the neighbors. We have worked with Planning Commission. We are trying to find the sweet spot. And, and I think this is a long way to checking the boxes that I was asked to do so last month.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, planning commissioners, do you all have thoughts, discussion among ourselves? Anybody have comments? Come on, y'all are quiet tonight. I, I understand that the, yes, Mr. Keen.
Well, I'm going to agree with Mr. Lambert. We asked a lot from him so far and he's come, they have did quite a bit to meet our request. Congratulations, Mark, on that. I'm for it.
Mr. Batty?
I guess I'd be interested in knowing a little bit more of where you're coming from, Susan, on, on this affordability issue here is. I mean, are you, what, what view are you taking? Are you, I mean, are you looking at this project? You looking at the 30,000-foot view? I'm trying to understand where, you know, kind of where you're coming from here.
One of the issues that was brought up as we discussed the 2040 comp plan is making sure that we have places for folks that are, are, are new police officers, are, are first to 10-year teachers, folks that are working in our community in either restaurants or, or, or our community businesses, making sure that they have a place in our community to live. And folks that are, that are in some of those jobs really cannot afford a lot of the family housing. If you, you know, look at the, the, the numbers every Sunday that they publish in the paper of, of what houses are selling for in Forest Lake. Additionally, we do not have transit in this community. So that means that anybody who is living in Forest Lake needs to have a vehicle, at least one vehicle, and they will. least one vehicle, and they will, it is an additional part of, of living in Forest Lake. With a very, very large percentage and, and the ask is a large percentage of one and smaller than one bedroom units. If the city says, yes, we'll go there and, and we'll accept that, just as we did on some others, but even more extreme on this one, then I would expect that there would be an opportunity for some of our folks who, you know, i- if they're making the forty-four thousand median income, would be able to afford an apartment, even a one bedroom in Forest Lake. And so my concern is that if the city is going to say, yes, we'll accept a, a large number of, of one bedroom and smaller than one bedroom apartments, then in return, there should be some sort of, of affordability opportunity for folks to live in Forest Lake who, who work here and who we depend on to be in Forest Lake. So that's kind of where I'm coming from. I'm also really reluctant to keep pushing the envelope bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger because as we do that, the next apartment building that comes in will be asking for eighty percent one bedroom or, or more than that. And I realize that it is not as economically beneficial to build two bedroom units or even all one bedroom units as it is to, to build studio apartments. But I am very concerned that with the number of one bedroom and studio apartments that we've already approved in the city, that there will be some challenges with being able to, to actually keep these for the long term occupied and viable. So Commissioner, that's, that's where I'm coming from.
Okay.
I, I understand that, that there was a reduction in the amount of covered parking, which this planning commission has heard over and over again, that you can't live in Forest Lake without a garage. And so there, there was that and the, and a reduction of, of other parking and parking has moved in closer. The, the changes that were made to me are, are valuable changes, but they are mostly cosmetic changes. And they're, they're not really changes to that big disparity in both the size of the individual dwellings and the percentages. So that's, again, that's kind of where I'm coming from.
Okay.
Commissioners, other comments? Commissioners, are you ready to make a motion? Mr. Miller?
Yep, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of the preliminary planned unit development plan with the nine recommendations by staff.
Is there a second to that motion? Mr. Keen? Okay, Mr. Keen seconded. Karen, could you please call a roll?
Commissioner Young?
No.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
No.
Motion passes. Mr. Lambert, congratulations and good luck with your project.
Thank you. I'll make you proud. We, we, and I guess maybe just one final comment. I know it's a little unsolicited, but I, 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 I guess we came forward with the, the unit count because that's what the market is telling us to do. And Commissioner Young, to your point, we'll maybe see each other again soon, or maybe I've got three bedrooms for you. But right now, the market says this is what they want. And, and so we're trying to make sure that we don't disregard what people are telling us that they want. And, and so as we walk forward, we'll keep a cautious eye on it because we understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let me find my agenda here that I just pushed by. Donovan, could you please present the information on agenda number seven, sixty-eight twenty-five North Shore Trail? It's a minor subdivision. Planning commissioner members, we do have a required public hearing for this. So after Donovan makes his presentation and after you have an opportunity to ask questions of Donovan, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Donovan, I think you're on mute.
Thank you. I'd like to present the minor subdivision application for the property located at six-eight-two-five North Shore Trail Drive, North Shore Trail. The applicant is James Scarmuso, who I believe is in the participant room at the moment. And the property is located on, on the North Shore First Lake. Going to give you a little orientation, you know, quite near the northern bond, boundary line of the, of the city. And currently, it's a, a, a two point five acre parcel and is approximately two hundred feet wide. Of course, within the Shoreland Overlay District, single family zoning. The, uh, the, the lot split here is basically right down the middle. We have, you know, two, two conforming lots, each a hundred, a hundred feet wide and one point two five acres. They, they both, they both, you know, they're on the south side of North Shore Trail. Bysecting the property shown here in that shaded area is a, the, the trunk line for the sanitary sewer that circumvents the lake. And as part of the, a city staff recommendation of approval is the dedication of a, you know, utility easement for this area as well as drainage utility easements on the, on the, the side property lines. And in this wood, in, in this, in this, this is one of those cases where, you know, as the city receives these applications, we seek to basically apply the standards that we've applied now for properties as well as play a little catch up that there is a sewer easement on the property. This widens it and makes it much easier for a city, any kind of city maintenance and access. And the, um, so the city engineer did review this and with Public Works, and they do recommend those, the dedication of those easements. And the staff recommendation is for a planning commission recommendation of city approval to divide the property to create two conforming lots within this single family zoning district with Shoreland Overlay. And with the three conditions regarding the easement dedications, the parkland dedication fee payment, as well as no building that can occur before a building permit. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Commissioners? Mr. Miller?
Donovan, do you know, are we going to allow them to put individual driveways in, hard surface driveways over that easement?
Yes, that is, that is standard for that. And the way that the city deals with that, if, if there is a sort of, you know, work that's done and the driveway's torn up, then, you know, the city will return it to grade. But then the owner is responsible for any sort of landscaping or improvements or on top of that to restore it back to, you know, to their desire.
Other questions for Donovan? Mr. Keen?
The drainage situation there, when you split up a property like that and you have, now you have two driveways. I know this happened to a house on Third Lake, North Shore. They split the yard, the, the second house was built, and they still have problems with drainage out, out by the street. Is there any way to, does the city keep track of that stuff or would that be part of, you know, once they go further out with the plans, put in proper drainage?
Well, I mean, we, we want to make, we have, do have the required dedication of those drainage utility easements along the property lines to accommodate any sort of difficulties there. Are you referring to, is it, is it issue, issue with along the ditch and culvert and driveway? Is that sort of thing? Right, so privates are, I mean, sorry, culverts are a private improvement. And the city does have a fifteen inch minimum, you know, culvert pipe size. And we do often, you know, we encourage them to contact Public Works to make sure that those are installed correctly. And of course, if they're not, then, then the owner is responsible for fixing that. The property is rather flat. I don't expect that we'll see that here. And probably any sort of, you know, improvements on the property besides the driveway and culvert will be, you know, more close to shoreline and not, you know, not be impacted by any sort of drainage issues that could occur by the, by the road. Is that your question?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions for Donovan? Donovan, just one, one question. Often in lot splits, we have a challenge eventually down the road with folks asking for variances to be able to build. Do you expect that there will be two significant building sites? I'm assuming with the acreage that there is, but are you certain that there are two significant building sites that will not require future variances?
I'm confident there is based on the size of the parcels. I think they'll see a little bit of challenge on getting the shore land, the, the shore to work for them is considerable ice ridge at the lake, but that's more of a, in the end, it's kind of a landscaping issue. You know, these are ones where it's, it's a, it's an issue or it can be a problematic to have the long driveway eating up your impervious surface. And I always try to work with candidates, but this is part, this is kind of the, the situation. And if you want to attach a garage, that could, that could be a difficulty on a, on a lot this deep. I don't, in the, in the end, that's, you know, a homeowner's choice to, you know, assume that challenge. And, but that's something that I've already, you know, had a couple, you know, folks interested in this, in these lots. And, you know, I'm telling them these are the rules. And of course, you know, I know that this planning commission is aware of, you know, or don't, you know, is, really takes those variance requests seriously and is aware that the self-created, you know, variance request doesn't, doesn't get a lot of, you know, got a lot of love from this planning commission.
Oh, I think we did just fine the past one. Okay, other questions from commissioners? Would the applicant like to make any comments? Karen, I don't know if, um, you are on mute if you are trying to speak right now?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm sorry, technical difficulties here. I'm sorry. I thank you. They're two great lots. I think they'll be beautified by having, right now, that had been a nineteen, twenty-one year old structure and the, it hadn't been taken care of. It was in one family since nineteen twenty-one. It will only be improved. And there's plenty of space to have water absorption. It's just a long lot, offers benefit of silence off of the road, so thank you very much. Hopefully you can hear me.
Yes, sir, we can. Thank you.
I, I don't see me, so I don't know how that works. I'm retired. I, I'm not technically good at this.
I'm not retired and I'm supposed to be able to do this every day, all day, and I'm not technically good at this. All right, we will now open the public hearing. This is, this application does require a public hearing, so we're going to open the public hearing. Karen, do you know if there's anyone in your virtual audience that is interested in speaking?
I don't see any hands raised. And so if there is anyone that wishes to speak during this public hearing, if you look towards the bottom of your screen, you will see a spot where it shows raise hand. You should be able to click on that and I will see it from my end and I can move you into the meeting.
Donovan, is there anybody at City Hall that is interested in this?
No one is at City Hall right now.
You're the lonely guy again tonight.
It's my clubhouse.
Okay. We'll give it another thirty seconds or so to make sure that folks can find a little yellow hand to raise if they wish to.
I'm still not seeing anyone.
Okay. Then I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. There were no comments during the public hearing. Commissioners, do you have, do you wish to make discussion on this item? Let's see, Mr. Miller?
No discussion, just like to move to a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the proposed minor subdivision with the three staff recommendations.
Is there a second? Mr. Batty has seconded. Mr. Brink, did you have a question?
Nope, I was just seconding, but gave it to it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Karen, could you please call roll? I'm sorry, Donovan?
Can we, Commissioner Miller, this would be a, a recommendation of city council recommendation, correct?
Correct, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Karen, could you please call roll on the vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you all very much. Donovan, that takes us to our next agenda item. Item number eight, motor vehicle part sales. We need a zoning, there is a zoning text amendment being requested.
Yes. Chair and members of the, of the planning commission like to present the zoning text amendment to allow a, it's a change in the motor vehicle part sales definition and to allow motor vehicle part sales in the MU2 general mixed use zoning district as well as the, the highway, I'm sorry, let me get this, highway, highway commercial district and also within the B three limit industrial district. The, this is something of, uh, you know, of a technical tweaking of the, of the zoning code that comes from an application that a Batteries Plus franchisee seeks to, you know, locate in a building on South Lake Street. And part of the Batteries Plus business model is, well, it's doing batteries. And part of that is auto battery installation so that customers are encouraged to make an appointment and then, you know, come and actually have the batteries installed. And this is done in basically, you know, not in your service bay like you would in many, you know, like an auto parts, you know, repair shop. And this is, they, they tell me that this is about three percent of the business, but within this Lake Street area within the MU2 zoning district, there's currently a prohibition on new minor auto parts repair shops. And so, you know, here's kind of what they submitted, which is showing all the different kind of batteries that they, they do. And so the way we, and, and not wanting basically a business to be refused entrance to city, to Forest Lake, you know, we've, working with the city attorney, we crafted a means to have this happen. I just want to kind of run through some of the photos submitted here. I mean, this, this shows some other battery plus, you know, locations in the metro, which, which we see, you know, they're in strip malls, so there's not like an enclosed bay. You know, and I actually, you know, contacted planning and zoning staff in Eagan and Maple Grove, asking them, have they had any issues with this sort of installation? And informed me, no, it really was not an issue for them. And so as far as- And so as far as, is, uh, you know, it being something that, you know, causing an issue is really, that seems, you know, like it's really, um, is, uh, is not, not, you know, not a concern that I could, I can, I can see. The actual, but the means to do this change in this tweaking in the zoning code is to, I'll share now the, uh, the actual, you know, text that is proposed. And it'll, uh, show to you. So basically, the first piece is to allow, um, you know, motor vehicle part sales as a, you know, a permitted use within, um, in Forest Lake, which also has the means, is that, also has the effect of allowing, you know, legalizing the O'Reilly's Auto Parts, which is a few doors down, which has been there since '07, but, you know, working with the city attorney, we found out that though motor vehicle part is allowed use within the B2, the highway commercial district, it's not in this MU2. So this is kind of a, you know, a zoning text change that actually has other ramifications, I think, that are positive. So the, so is an accessory use in this MU2. It allows for the onsite removal and installation of minor motor vehicle parts, including batteries, exterior vehicle lights and windshield wiper blades and other similarly minor installations that A, are incidental to a retail, retail sale, B, are not time-intensive, C, do not cause obnoxious noise, noise or odor, and D, do not require lifting any part of the vehicle or removing doors or fenders. And so this, you know, also has, has the ability to, within this zoning district, allow for these part sales as part of any repairs. Previously, that wasn't, it's a technical piece, was not allowed, you know, by the zoning code. So this, something of a surprise to me, but I'm glad that we're, we claimed the, uh, the zoning code this way, as well as just, you know, adding this within the B3 district to allow the motor vehicle, you know, part sales as well as within the B2, the highway commercial, that part sales as well. And also clarifying that it's motor vehicle part sales before it's just said motor vehicle parts is the definition. So, um, you know, trying to get better English within the zoning code as well. So, um, so basically this is something that zoning text amendment that'll, you know, correct some of the omissions in, in the zoning code as well as enable a new business to come in. Staff recommendation is for a planning commission recommendation of this zoning text amendment. And of course, the final decision, decision does rest with city council. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
Planning commissioners, please realize that we do have a public hearing as, as part of this and that if you do support the staff recommendation, we are going to have to develop findings of fact for a zoning text amendment change. Are there any questions for Donovan? Mr. Keen?
Did you say the city attorney already looked that over?
Yeah, so, um, we, you know, we had kind of a, almost an hour-long conversation around some draft language I had put together. I discussed with the applicant, Julie Nash Smith, who's also here, here with, with us on the, in the call, in the meeting. And they're the ones, of course, who actually did produce that draft ordinance that is within your packet as well.
Commissioners, any other questions of, of Donovan? Commissioners, do you have any questions of the applicant, Ms. Nash? Cricket. All right. Then I am going to open the public hearing at this time. If there is anyone who wishes to speak on this item of zoning amendment change to allow motor vehicle part sales in the applicable zoning districts, please, please let us know now. And Donovan, I'm assuming that you are still the Maytag dude?
No one is here right now.
Okay.
If I may address the council, please. My name is Julie Nash Smith and I'm the agent for the applicant. And that's Shane Ebertowski. He's the Batteries Plus franchisee. And the Batteries Plus franchise is, is a primarily a retail store. 97% of their business are retail sales, which include key fobs, fixing, phone screens, things like that. And I've compiled a list of some of the things that they do offer. So it's a very small percentage of battery sales and probably even 50% of the battery sales are, the customers have them installed. So it's a, it's a wonderful opportunity to have a, a great 700-plus stores across this country, to have one located in Forest Lake, as I think is a great service for the community. I personally would love to take advantage of some of those services as well. And I'd like to thank Donovan for working with the applicant and myself to, to try to find a way to make this as easy and painless as possible. And also the commissioners for hearing us out on this matter. That's it.
Donovan and Karen, are there any other folks that are interested in speaking during the public hearing?
I have no one.
Then I'm going to close the public hearing at this time. Planning commissioners, do you have any questions, comments, or discussion at this time? Mr. Brink?
I will say that years ago, when I was much younger, learning to drive and kind of fixing my car and all those fun things, I was embarrassed to know that I was unable to actually fix my wipers and attach those when I needed to do it. So it was nice to, you know, when I bought those at a retail shop, they came out and just attached those on for me, but I know now how to do those, but also playing with the battery, I think I can see how that would also apply. So I would be for this.
Any other comments? If not, I would be seeking a motion, please. And please remember that we do need to do the findings of fact. Mr. Miller?
Will make the motion, and I do recommend the adoption of the findings of fact as well as recommendation to the city council for approval of the draft ordinance to amend the definition of the motor vehicle parts sales and insertion of language permitting the use in the B2, B3, and MU2 zoning districts.
Nicely done. Is there a second? Mr. Keen seconded. Karen, could you please do a roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Ms. Smith, thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you all very much. Have a good night.
Okay, rocking right along. Agenda item nine this evening is a conditional use for a sign, conditional use permit, 21395 Goodview Avenue North, the Forest Lake Middle School. Donovan, could you please walk us through this?
Certainly. This is a application that was delayed actually by the Goodview Roundabout construction. And the, um, what we have for you is, with the applicant is Joan Sign, Michelle, as well as Larry Martini from the school district. This is to replace the monument sign for the Forest Lake Middle School located 2135, 21395 Goodview Avenue. What's submitted as the, the site plan, you know, shows the, uh, the sign located approximately, you know, three feet south of their northern driveway and 18, 13 feet, almost 14 feet from the, the right, the Goodview right of way. So we have, you know, the sign located there. Here's kind of the overall view of it within that, you know, here, this being the Goodview Roundabout. The sign itself is going to be about seven and a half feet tall and having about 36 square feet of sign graphic. And it's similar in design to the, the high school sign that was replaced a few years ago with another COP application. And so it has the, the, uh, the Forest Lake Ranger logo. It does not have, does not have an electronic message board and with a rather handsome, you know, stone foundation, a monument base, I should say, and will be illuminated. The, uh, the photometric sign, you know, does comply, photometric plan does comply with line regulations shown here. You can see, well, the numbers are pretty small, but it, you know, it does, it does have less than 0.4 foot candles illuminating the, uh, the right of way. And, uh, the, um, there are conditional use finds of fact in the packet, which indicate, or which state that, you know, that the, this improvement won't have this negative impact on adjacent lands and, um, and it's consistent with the zoning code encompassed the plan and it's, it's, you know, and site improvements associated with a school use is allowed. It's a conditional use within this MXR1 zoning, MXR1 zoning district. And the, uh, the staff recommendation is for approval with seven conditions that relate to consistency, you know, the consistency with the 99 conditional use permit, illuminated sign being turned off by 10:00 PM or, or when no functions are being conducted at the school. It can be internally illuminated. And that, uh, you know, building, you know, permit is required, actually, we should add that, I don't see that in here, but of course, city engineer concerns should be met when in this case, he, you know, Ryan reviewed the, the site plan and he had no concerns. And if any cert, any, um, you know, any significant alterations of the site in the future do require amendment to the COP. So at this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the planning commission.
And Donovan, the requirements to, for the sign and building permits are in the recommendations. So you didn't forget it.
Okay.
Are there any questions of Donovan? Donovan, this is kind of a traffic-challenged area. Are we certain that the sightlines are not going to be inhibited from traffic coming from the left of the driveway for people trying to make the right out onto Goodview?
Yeah, so that was, that was something that I, you know, did bring up with, with the city engineer. He didn't express any concerns. I'd like to share with you again, the, uh, you know, the, you know, the, the site plan. So you can see zeroing in here where, you know, cars coming, you know, in this case, cars leaving will, will be past it. And, you know, any cars coming from, say, coming northward would be, you know, any cars, they, they could, you know, as long as they don't swing wide and, and, you know, be in some, take something of a reckless turn, you know, which, you know, I don't believe there's going to be a traffic visibility issue. Again, I'll bring up, and this is, and this also shows, you know, there's a photo simulation here which shows, you know, how the, the sign, which is just a little, um, you know, it's little more than six and a half feet long. Of course, is, you know, no, no vehicles could actually be totally obscured by the sign as well for anyone coming or entering through that driveway.
Thank you. We do have a public hearing on this also. Are there any other questions? And did we have anyone from the school district that wanted to speak this evening?
Larry Martini is here to represent the application.
Mr. Martini, did you want to say anything to the planning commission? And I don't know if you're on mute, I can't tell.
Thank you for considering this tonight. I can answer any questions, but thank you, folks.
Commissioners, do you have any? Mr. Batty?
Um, I'm just curious why it's so close, what, why it's so, why we're putting that sign so close to the road there and so close to the intersection? It just, it seems like it's a large enough sign and the topography there is such that that sign could be moved back away from that corner there and it would, it would, there is going to be a blind spot there for a car sitting in a particular, you know, that would, that would be coming on there if there was a car, you know, the car closed, the second car in can't see, you know, there's going to be a blind spot where that, that sign is. And I'm, I'm just curious that, I mean, there's a, quite a large, wide open space there. Why so close?
We don't have an answer other than we set back the sign more than 13 feet from the pedestrian walkway, which is more width from the street. So there probably are two cars of visibility to take a right turn.
Mr. Keen?
Mr. Martini, have you thought about putting that sign on the north side of that exit? So when people are exiting, your traffic's coming from the south heading north, there would be no blind spot there at all. And the sign would, on the right side would, wouldn't hinder anything.
According to our designers, this is an electrical requirement for the illumination to feed off of that pole that's located at that location.
What do you mean? There's no electricity there, but there's a light pole there?
There's a light pole on the southern side of our drive, but not a light pole on the northern side of the drive.
Well, when they just showed us that picture, it looked like the light pole was on the north side of the exit. Now, you're coming out of the school property. Donovan, can you pull up that picture again?
Yeah, certainly.
Thank you. It looked like a street light.
It looks like it is on the south side and not the north.
Oh, is it?
It's on the south side, but for some reason, I'm, my Zoom screen is... Where's it going? I'm sorry.
Mr. Keen, I think the pole really, it is on the south side. And I'm assuming, Mr. Martini, then, that it is not possible to go under your drive to, to do any electrical work?
Not without a lot more cost.
So if you can see the sign there, it is on the, on the, you know, side of the, um, of there. And what also I noticed was that gray does drop off here and these, according to our wetland data layer, th- these are wetlands some distance back here as well.
Yeah, I see, I see that now. The light pole is on that cement pedestal where the light pole itself, it looked like it was on the north side. I stand corrected.
Any other questions for Mr. Martini? Any other questions for Mr. Martini? Okay, then I am going to, this does require a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Karen and Donovan, do either of you have hordes of persons who are interested in a sign this evening? Or even one person interested in a sign this evening?
I do not have anyone.
I am going to close the public hearing then. Commissioners, do you have discussion regarding this sign application and/or motion? Mr. Brink?
Looking at the picture a little bit closer, it does look that, like with the walkway there, you could definitely see at least two cars in front of that sign before you'd have to make a turn. That's just my observation, if it helps any.
I'd like to go ahead and make the motion to accept the eight findings of fact and approve the conditional use permit application for the freestanding sign for Forest Lake Middle School with the seven staff recommendations.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brink, thank you. All right, Karen, could you please call our roll?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty? Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Motion passes. Mr. Martini, thank you very, very much. Okay, agenda item number 10 is a preliminary plat application, one nine eight six one Fitzgerald Trail and the Headwaters Village Third Edition. Donovan, could you please walk us through this?
Certainly. Chair members of the planning commission, I'd like to present the Headwaters Village Third Edition preliminary plat application. This application has a little bit of a history around, the initial application was to, to do a lot line adjustment since what is sought is, is an expanding in existing lot. The, the lot location is in, in Headwaters Village area, the, the commercial district area of the Headwaters subdivision. And I'm sorry, let me orient you first a little bit here with the, so it's just south the east of the Harvard Creek Service Center and near the, the Harvard Creek Transit Center and of course, the YMCA. So there's the Forest Lake Veterinary Hospital is here at one nine eight six one Fitzgerald Trail. It's adjacent to Lot One Block One of Headwaters Village Second Edition. And what is sought is an expansion of the, the veterinarian hospital lot, seventy-five feet to allow for some future expansion of the parking area and, and the building. Because the adjacent property exists as an outlot, it's not a simple lot line adjustment application. And so what is proposed is, what is required is, is the, is a, is a, is a new plat, Headwaters Village Third Edition. And so basically, we're taking the hospital, the vet hospital lot, expanding it, you know, shown, as shown here to do that. And which, you know, based on just the definition of, of the outlot within the zoning district, zoning code, this replating is required. This, you know, normally lot line adjustments are reviewed administratively and they never come before planning commission. So you can see, one other thing that actually does go through staff review on a normal basis, we do maybe about, you know, three, four, five of these a year. But this case, because of the unique situations, this is the preliminary plat, of course, just a recommendation is required with, with final decision authority with council. And the staff recommendation is for the council, I mean, sorry, planning commission, recommendation of approval and adoption of findings of fact as well. With that, that the, all required documents are recorded with the county and, you know, prior to any construction, the proper permitting must be followed. With that, I'm happy to take any questions from the, the planning commission and Len Pratt and Susan Brentson, Brentson, Brent, Brentisson, sorry about that, are here to represent the application.
Commissioners, do you have any questions for Donovan? Mr. Keen?
So this is just a preliminary, correct? So what is the, what is, I mean, they're going to come back with some plans and stuff like that, but is there any way they can go towards the east for the parking lot and the addition to this building or does it all have to go south? I mean, is there any give and take in there?
Well, this, I mean, this is what they proposed. This is what, you know, the property owners, you know, decided as far as what, you know, what is a suitable expansion. You know, any, any future, you know, there are somewhat limited as far as where they can, you know, given that size of the property and fact is there won't be any new access to Headwaters Parkway. You know, it's just, you know, Susan, the, the, the vet owner, you know, seeks to have some, you know, some, some elbow room, basically. And Len, the adjacent property owner is willing to, to, you know, to, to sell her that bit of property. So I'm not sure, you know, what those plans are in the future and, you know, we assume that, you know, any, any building expansion, parking lot expansion would come before the planning commission for that site plan review.
Well, I guess, have they thought about going east, you know, going out on that southeast corner, if they're going to build out of the building and then the parking lot rather than go into that, that wetland?
Maybe, maybe they might have some preliminary ideas and they can speak on those, you know.
Mr. Pratt, Ms. Brentisson, do you have a response to those questions? And welcome to the meeting this evening. And Mr. Pratt, I believe that you're on mute.
Yes, anyway, I did talk with Mr. Pratt on what areas of the property, the rest of the outlot that I could purchase in order for expansion and the expansion area defined is what he offered for sale.
And Ms. Brentisson, it's your intention to not be parking on the, the road anymore? Is to?
Yes, hopefully we, we'd take staff parking off of the road and be able to put it on to our own property.
Because that's, that's happened there for a very long time.
Yes, it has, and we'd definitely like to stop doing that.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any other questions for Ms. Brentisson or Mr. Pratt? We do need to hold a public hearing for this, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Mr. Hart, Karen, are there hordes?
No one.
Okay, y'all, y'all are lonely this evening. We have no controversy. Thank you. Last chance on public hearing, anybody, anybody? All right, I am going to close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion on this topic? Donovan, did you want to add something?
No.
Okay. And commissioners, I would be open to a motion regarding this application. Mr. Miller?
I might as well go for a hundred percent. I would like to make a recommendation, a motion for recommendation, an adoption of the finding of fact, findings of fact, and a recommendation to the city council to approve the preliminary plat for Headwaters Third Edition with the two staff recommendations.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Batty seconded. All right. Karen, could you please roll call vote?
Commissioner Young?
Aye.
Commissioner Batty?
Aye.
Commissioner Miller?
Aye.
Commissioner Keen?
Aye.
And Commissioner Brink?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much and we'll see you on the next step of the application process.
Thank you.
Good, good to see you both. Okay, next item is our other business. Commissioners, do you have any other things to discuss, bring forward this evening? Mr. Miller?
Just a question. We've talked a number of times about, you know, joint meetings with, you know, the EDA and council, and I know it's difficult because of COVID, but do you foresee any joint meetings coming up in the near future to kind of discuss kind of some things that are coming forward and what we're looking at? Because sometimes you talk to members of other commissions and you hear about things and you kind of go, oh, I don't know anything about that.
Such as the, the downtown group right now?
Yes, or other things.
Okay. Councilmember Monson, would you like to respond to that, please? And I think you're still muted.
I guess what you're asking, Commissioner Miller, is if it's a possibility to a joint meeting. And I would say yes, but I would say, and Donovan and Karen, we, we just talked about this, this past Monday and renewed our emergency declaration, so it would probably be remote. We have done, and Karen, I can't remember who it was with, but we did do, I think it was an EDA one, we did it remotely and it actually worked really well. So that would be an option. As for the scheduling of when, I would have to defer that one to, to staff and Mayor Bain.
We do have a joint council Parks, Lakes, Trails Commission meeting coming up on Tuesday. So if you want to tune in, Kevin, you can see how that all looks and goes. It'll be live streamed to YouTube, so you could watch it there and see how, exactly how a joint meeting is conducted. But we can do it, we've done it, we can do it.
You're making him jealous, Karen.
Meeting of the council and the downtown and the EDA groups.
Yep.
You know, I, I do think it's an excellent idea. There's something, it's going to be subject of a workshop next Tuesday, which is a joint Rice Creek City Study focused on the, what they call the jurisdictional, jurisdictional ditch four area, basically southwest, south and southwest of the Leela Headwaters campus. And that's actually some really great, you know, collaboration with the Washa District as well as future planning. It's kind of exciting what they're doing. So that is, and of course, you know, the, the previously mentioned downtown group and so I can see some, you know, some, lots of, lots of topics to just kind of get everyone aware of, you know, each other's process. And this, you know, as well as we seem to have more applications coming through. And I wanted to mention it before, it's not exactly germane to the Timber Ridge discussion, but I think the next, it wouldn't be in February, but maybe sometime in March, the first or second meeting, we'll see another apartment building site plan. In this case, it'll be an affordable housing, you know, affordable developer, a common bond is, is in, you know, meant in discussions with the city on, you know, pulling, bringing forth that building that they got concept approval of last summer.
Commissioners, do you have any other questions for councilmember Monson? Mr. Batty?
Um, I'm going to keep doing this, but I, I just, I'm just curious what the thirty-thousand foot view is here on the COVID thing. I'm, I'm wary of, of just hearing about, you know, six feet in front of our face and I, I don't mean to be disrespectful to anybody, but I just, I'm just curious if we're just locked in this, this mode and we're just, because I, I just, I just think we're losing something here that it, it's going to be harder and harder to get back, you know, the longer this thing goes. And I'm just, I'm just curious if there's any, I, I was under the understanding that there were some technological things that were being put in place and some formatting things in the council chamber there that were being considered, you know, and, but that, that was two, three or more months ago and there hasn't been a word about that since then. I, I, and I just, I'm, I just, I'm going to keep the pressure on here. I just think we should be, you know, seriously considering going back to live meeting.
I would say that I haven't heard an update on the technological updates that they were doing. I know they were doing it, but I will also say, and I, this is also recommended by city attorney, is to follow the governor's emergency orders and that's, we'll probably stay consistent with that.
Okay, so that's the thirty thousand foot view then, is that we're going to do what the governor says or what it recommends or whatever it is, however it comes down, whatever format it is. I don't follow it that closely enough to know whether it's a mandate or if it's just a recommendation.
Councilmember, could you, for the, for the other commissioners, a couple of folks on the council have noted that they've, they felt that there was more engagement now that, that folks could attend from home. Could you please comment on that?
Yeah, I would. We actually, I mean, we always had folks coming to council chambers, but it was the same folks all the time. I have seen a dramatic increase in folks that are coming to council meetings, sorry, that's my dogs, that are kind of unusual suspects, people we haven't seen before that are coming and engaging with the council, which is new, which is great. I mean, I think at some point, you know, the best of both worlds would be perfect to do in person and, and virtually, sorry.
Mr. Keen? Mr. Keen, you're on mute.
Yep.
There you go.
Similar to, I'm just going to comment on like Commissioner Batty was saying there, he, he getting back into the council chambers and stuff like that, but it just, just for thought, let's just say six months, a year down the road, we're all back in the council There's also, I think there's more people viewing this from home. So is, is there any way to keep the Zoom on even after we get back in the chambers? Because there's going to be people that don't want to come up to the city council chambers or they, and they can, they can view it at home and yet they would have a screen there where, you know, the people can counteract with everybody and.
I think, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's part of these upgrades to the technology is to consider keeping that, the kind of the best of both worlds. I mean, I think one of the things we've seen that, that I have not seen before is our younger residents, newer families with younger families engaging in these meetings and who typically aren't able to leave their home because they can't get a babysitter or, and so it would be great to have, to have both, both options for folks.
Mr. Brink? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was going to say, I'll get, I'll get an update for you because Dennison and councilmember Munson are correct that, you know, Dan Undem has been coordinating a lot of improvements and one of them is, and it is, there is a technical difficulty around getting the Zoom to work as well as making sure, you know, there's no microphone feedback. And, and we have new, new computers here and so there's, there's definitely been some upgrades, some, some improvements even that should have been done within initial installation in the city council chambers for the audio video equipment. I'll get an update for you just for that piece. And, you know, it's unfortunate that, I mean, that we all can't be together and we are still pretty much in a holding pattern with, with the, the governor's orders. And, you know, we're still trying to get vaccines, you know, I did, you know, we, you know, we heard from the fire chief this morning around, you know, what's potentially the next, you know, vaccine, kind of, you know, large vaccination effort and the vaccines that were promised are like a fraction of what, you know, are actually going to be delivered. So it's, you know, there's definitely frustrations in other, in other ways on just let's, can we get to the next stage? But, but at least I can get you the technological, you know, update, so we can, you can at least take some solace in that.
Mr. Brink, did you have a question earlier?
No, not really. I think it was just in response to Mr. Batty and that I think ultimately the CDC is driving, of course, a lot of, of this, and I think that's where the governor is taking his cues from like most everybody, so that was it.
Councilmember Monson, were there any other updates that you wanted to provide to us? And, and Mr. Miller?
There are, there are not any other updates, but happy to answer any, any other questions that folks might have.
Mr. Miller?
No question, just comment, wanted to tell you, even though you said you felt a little rusty, you did an excellent job tonight, so thank you for cheering our meeting.
Thank you all. Speaking of which, on the next meeting agenda, you all will be electing a new chairman and a new vice chairman. So that will be on the top of the next agenda. To add to whatever, whatever fun and games Donovan can come up with. Okay, individual commissioners, Mr. Miller, anything?
Uh, no.
Mr. Keen?
No, none.
Mr. Batty?
When, when's the next meeting?
Donovan?
That is uncertain. We do, I mean, there's a couple of applications that are incomplete that, you know, I've started to do some review on. And we're still in conversation with the other, you know, other concepts of the site plan, so and I can say for certain, there is not one in, in the late, in the fourth week of February.
Mr. Brink?
Nothing for me.
Okay. Donovan, any updates?
Um, the Headwaters 123 Comp Plan Amendment passed one committee approval this past Monday, so that one's, finally we're working its way through the system. And that I'm happy to take in questions from the Plan Commission.
Any interest?
I'm sorry, sir?
Any interest in the 123 at this point?
Um, I did, you know, Dan, Dan Undem is the main contact with the broker and he, you know, they, nothing, nothing serious, but, you know, Dan was asking me, when, when will there be, it actually takes a Met, Met Council Board decision to approve this one, since of its larger size of a comprehensive plan amendment. And so that, that gives me a little bit of encouragement that he wants to, you know, that he's getting some communications with Dan Peterson, the broker. But nothing that I can report on really.
Donovan, if possible, at our next meeting, could we have a very brief discussion of the work that the downtown group has been doing and their, their planning efforts? For the rest of the commission's information, yes, I am on that downtown committee, which is sort of a subset of the EDA. They have been interviewing a couple of consultants to help put together a plan for reinvigorating that downtown area. And I, I understand that the council will be taking a look at selecting one of those folks in the near future. The goal is to, what is possible to reinvigorate that area around the Broadway Lake Roundabout and slightly to the north, realizing that there are some real development challenges there. So getting some ideas of what's possible, but if we could get an update on, as a planning commission, if we could get an update on that, that would be very helpful to this group as we look toward doing the zoning text changes that are needed after the comp plan.
Certainly, yeah. I think it'd be appropriate to get Dan to provide a little presentation. Basically, this is right now the work scope, since the actual work hasn't really been initiated with, with the consultant. But I think there's a lot to, not to explain exactly what those goals are and, you know, provide it to schedule and so the Plan Commission members are aware of, because this is really much is tied in, this is actually planning, you know, consultant who is doing the work. As well as, I can provide a little update on the, there's a storm sewer study that's focusing on downtown area to looking at a more regional approach for stormwater management, so that we have something like, say, the theater building that gets redeveloped so that, you know, somehow relieving them of the responsibility of treating, you know, the stormwater on site, you know, in these very, you know, small city lots. So we can also, there's also some activity with that, and that's a joint study also being funded by the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Washita District.
Karen, did you have any updates, ma'am?
I'm just to tail off what Donovan said about the, the storm sewer, I believe in that, at the next workshop as well. I think Ryan is, has brought some information forward on that, so it'll be presented at the workshop on Tuesday, actually, next week. So the meeting has been moved, or the workshop has been moved to Tuesday because of the holiday. And so that is also going to be livestreamed via YouTube. You can tune in and watch that as well. And then back to the council chambers, I know what, what has been worked on is to try to figure out and develop a hybrid format so that those that need to or, you know, that have to stay home for health reasons can still participate in a meeting. There's also legal ramifications of having public meetings in a, in a private setting. And so right now, we're, we're staying under this emergency order and doing all these meetings remotely, then you can speak with the city administrator a little bit more about it and what that entails. But it has to do with also the legal ramifications of having public meetings in a private setting. We could continue to do it that way, but then, you know, people would have to open their homes to public or we could sit in a coffee shop and have a meeting in the public area. So the emergency order continues on for, you know, as that, as part of that reason, but also to fall in line with what the state is doing, what the governor's doing. But we are working towards the technology in the council chambers to figure out some hybrid models, to figure out how to livestream all of this, and it is some technical challenges. But it, it's, I mean, we're slowly working on it. We also are considering, there's other populations in the, in the community, for example, the senior center, that's completely shut down right now, and we have to really consider, you know, health issues there and, and so it's, and we're trying to take into consideration everybody's needs and wants and desires for getting back to public meetings. And, I mean, unfortunately, we're just not at that spot just yet. But, but Dennis, you're not the only one who's been asking. I just want you to know that.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the organization? If not, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all very, very much for your patience. I appreciate it.
Thank you.